Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Pleasantville City Council Work Meeting. Today is September 16, 2024. The time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in conformance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please. Davenport, Samuel Aaron.
Here.
Camona.
Present.
Coria.
Present.
Buckley.
Present.
Boguski.
Present.
Thomas. Present. Six and a tenth. For the record, Mr. Davenport would not be here this evening. May I have approval of the previous minutes?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have capital improvement report. Laura, we see you.
Good evening, can everybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we issued our latest capital status report. Late last week, we actually wanted to sit down with Kenya, go through all the projects and provide some background. The first project is there's various pump station improvements. It's funded through the I-Bank. Improvements at various different pump stations. That design is nearly complete. We're going over finishing touches with Public Works, and that'll be ready to go to bid. The generator, it sounds like in my recent meeting with our administrator, it's kind of in the same place it last was where our construction official wants to meet with Atlantic City Electric out there to talk about where the service is going to pull from. So, that's the latest on that one. The city received county funding for Woodland Avenue Park, which was some drainage improvements. We met out there with Public Works and Recreation and are working on a plan to suit the needs there. We had various park improvements. That was at Leeds Ave., Max Manning, and Preston Avenue. That project, we had bid twice. The cost did not come back, the bids did not come back in line with the pricing. So, we are working on negotiating a price with the contractors, and we recently forwarded that information over to our administrator so we can get next steps on that one. The new gym floor at the Recreation Building, we expect to advertise that project this fall to advance that. The senior center building, the city was awarded funding. We're in connection with administration just on next steps to advance that. We also submitted a CBPG application for soccer field at Tilton Avenue Park and then tennis pickleball at Clonatus Avenue. It's a crosswalk signage. That's pending review at the county whether or not that'll be a funded project. As it relates to our DOT project, Andley Boulevard, that project is complete. It has closed out with the DOT, and it'll be on maintenance bond for two years. Decatur Avenue, very similar. That's substantially complete. We're coordinating the final pay estimate, maintenance bond, and close out with the DOT. Improvements to Tunis Harrison and Handing Courts, that project is also complete and is under a two-year maintenance period. Datty Road, improvements to Datty Road, that project is also substantially complete. Contractors work with their punch list items and a lot closed out with DOT. Park Avenue, that was slated to be base paved the end of last week. So, that project is also substantially complete. We expect it to be fully completed in the spring as a settlement period. Black Horse Pike, that's a streetscape project. That project was awarded to Charles Marandino. That construction is expected to start actually next week. The Phase Two proposal for the streetscape improvement is also along Black Horse Pike. That proposal has been submitted. It's pending authorization. And the project for DOT guidelines needs to be awarded by May of 2025, so you do have time on that. Streetscape along Old Franklin, I'm sorry, along Old Turnpike. That project is complete and is under a maintenance bond. Streetscape improvements along Leeds Avenue, North Main, Washington. That was actually a state branch, it's a school grant, and that project's going to proceed under the DOT Design Assistance Program. As it relates to improvements along Bridgewood and Clonatus, that project needs to be awarded by November 22 of 2024. Design is substantially complete. We are just waiting for clearance to bid that project through the I-Bank because there was a sewer component. The city got funding for light improvements along the bike path between Decatur and Milan. That project has to be awarded by December 11. And again, similarly, we're just waiting for DOT to get around to bid that project. Green Street, city was awarded Transit Village funds for improvements to Green Street. Again, needs to be awarded by December 11. Design is complete and is pending DOT clearance to bid that project. Improvements along South Franklin Boulevard, East Deview Avenue, and South Edgely. So, that project is in design phase. It's expected to be advertised towards the end of this year with construction in 2025. We received a municipal aid grant for Lorraine Avenue. That proposal has been submitted and it's pending authorization. But again, doesn't need to be awarded until October of 2025, so there's time. We received a Transit Village grant for improvements on Second, Third, and Fourth. But given the project cost, we saw a scope modification with the DOT, which we're finalizing the terms of that. And we're probably going to look to just proceed along Third Street. We'll get an amended proposal over for that. And again, project doesn't need to be awarded until November 2025, so there's time. City was awarded grant for intersection improvements at Woodland Avenue Route 9, including crosswalk signal and ADA ramps. That project needs to be awarded also November 2025. It is substantially designed, and we expect to advertise that later this year. Bike lanes, so we were awarded a grant for bike lanes along Franklin Boulevard from the Black Horse Pike to East Belila. That project is also substantially designed, and we expect to advertise that later this year. The city was awarded local transportation funds for improvements to paint Glenwood Avenue between Woodland and the Spruce. We're preparing a proposal for that. School and water updates, so we're working on a proposal to keep the mapping updates. The DAP requires that part of the 2025 MS4 requirement requirements. Our office had already completed the roadway and second third sewer assessments. That report's been submitted. We also shared that with the new administrator, so she had that. Lakes Bay Unit B Park, so that project, we're still continuing to work with contractor. We expect that to be ready for spring, summer 2025. And Crab Dock, we're just looking at feasibility for an alternate location for that project to move forward. And that basically is this quarter's summary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor? Do you have any questions? Uh, counsel.
On the Transit Village, Second, Third, and Fourth Streets.
Yes.
Are you not doing the sanitary sewer because they need to be done? Or there's just not enough money to do them?
Well, so the DOT, actually, and any of the DOT funded programs, they do not cover sanitary sewer. That's typically why we're seeing I-Bank funding opportunity or private funds. So, in this particular case, Third Avenue is what we selected. It's only a block. And I actually don't believe we need the sanitary sewer improvements there, so we'll be able to proceed. But we were just, what the grant was versus what the cost estimates were, was a substantial difference. So, if we reduce the scope to one road, we can cover that with the funding.
They just didn't want us to have to go back at a later time and see that the road that we've already finished that did the sanitary sewer. But there, you know, you say now that you have a list of the most important ones, and if that's not on the most important ones, okay.
Yes, okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to bring up Park Avenue. And I've had a conversation with administration CFO and the VA. In all honesty, I was under depression of Park Avenue. How do you also cover up to Cross Street right in front of the cemetery? Obviously, it's not. Where would we stand on that? Because we have two beautiful streets going that are running, Park Avenue ending right at the, at that section of Cross Street and Datty Road.
So, my suggestion is that we apply for a grant to extend those improvements through the next funding cycle. I think it's a good candidate because it's pinky and down her legs a little.
That's where they won't intersect that one down.
Yeah, correct.
In the last meeting that we were in, they said there was either money left over from another, from another part, one of the decrease in one of the grants. And we would discuss if we do from Park Avenue to the cemetery.
So, we can look at whether or not, if there was any exit. The city still has excess funds, whether or not we could reallocate those. I'm not aware of any that have bid where there's a balance that will cover it, but I'm happy to look into that.
Laura, what the mayor is referring to is Andley Boulevard. There was a change order of 121,000. So, that's what we discussed.
So, I can see if the DOT will allow us to apply it. Typically, it has to be part of an open, open grant. But we can certainly review that with our grant writer and see if we can do that.
And Recreation Center with a generator that we're waiting, and the electricity that has to be run. I heard there was an alternate way that we'd be able to do it.
That's what our construction official is hoping to explore with Atlantic City Electric. I think as it was depicted, or what Atlantic City Electric dictated, was actually going to result in a change order to the city. And our construction official thinks that we might be able to pull service from a different location. So, they're going to meet on site to determine if that's feasible.
Yes. Thank you. Yes.
Is the generator, I know we've discussed this before. Is it all electric or is it partially gas-fired and electric?
As I recall, we did not necessarily do this. I mean, I thought it was, I think it's all electric. I don't know that it was, I didn't think. No, it would have to have natural gas.
It was electrical to have the generator.
Correct.
So, it's not very much electric, right?
Correct. Correct, and it's an emergency backup generator.
Lastly, on the soccer field on Tilton Road, you said they license the heads of the, of the county now?
That's correct. We applied for a 2024 CBPG grant for that, and they haven't announced the awards yet. I think all indications would be that the city would be successful because we typically are the county funding sources.
You'll take counsel, Coria?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Laura. Thank you, have a good night. You too. Thank you. Madam Clerk, agenda review.
Orders number five, second reading of the Public Care and Health Record Session concerning technical regulations admitted chapter 215 of the City Code.
Counsel? Well, Madam Clerk, we just want to ask if we can take this for executive session? Because there's a couple of questions that are.
So, you're doing the executive session when? Right after our overall agenda?
Yes.
Okay, very well. Orders number 10, second reading of Public Care and Health Record Session adopting the redevelopment plan for the properties identified as block 382, blocks 114 on the official tax map of the city of Pleasantville, pursuant to the London redevelopment and housing law NJSA 48 reform 12-1.
Yes, counsel, any questions? CNN?
Resolution 141, approval for anticipation with the State of New Jersey Federal Grant Program, grant number 25-0119, administered by the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety.
Counsel, any questions? CNN?
Resolution 142, authorized change order for a decrease of 121,711.24 in the contract to South State Incorporated for the Andley Boulevard improvements.
Counsel, any questions? CNN?
Resolution 143, authority authorized signatories on city accounts.
Counsel, any questions? CNN?
Resolution 144, authorizing the tax collector to refund taxes for certain properties in the city.
Any questions, counsel? CNN?
Resolution 145, authorizing issuance of a duplicate tax sale certificate.
Any questions, counsel? CNN?
Resolution 146, authorizing execution of the redevelopment agreement with Zell Enterprises LLC regarding Rottenah redevelopment plan, block 19, blocks 13, and 15.
Any questions, counsel? CNN?
Resolution 147, approval to submit an application and execute an agreement for a transportation accessibility and mobility program with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Any questions, counsel? CNN?
Resolution 148, adopting a boarding contact person for the employment practices, liability, attorney consultation service with Atlantic County municipal insurance.
Any questions? Counsel? CNN?
Next is review of the bill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the bill that we paid between that council meeting and this one. You know, we've, they've been 10 days, so it hasn't been admitted. But the bigger one, you can see down a lot of 4.2 million dollars. That was the city's responsibility to pay for pensions for both pumping employees as well as the, uh, people in fire. So, 3.7 million dollars would be to pay for the police and fire and half a million dollars for our contribution for the rest of the city, well, during PERS. Thank you for the bill that's looking to be paid between now and, or tomorrow, next day. First page, the normal ACUA bill for trash collection We go on to page three. Fourth one down, GE Mechanical, the repair of the cooling station, cooling tower, I'm sorry, cooling station for air conditioning and repairs. That seems to be a continuing thing once a year. We wind up having problems with it. Unfortunate cost to replace it by half a million dollars. So, we go along and put together a beginning. We go to page four. Your team at, uh, New School Equipment Enterprises, that is for the up fittings of the fire department SUV for putting the other bell and whistles that go along with the SUV. Five or six down below that, a total of Board of Education for a normal monthly payment of 847,000. And we go over to page five. Third one down, South State, that is paying for Phase Two of Douting Park Avenue. That is the second payment we've made for that. And then, um, let me see down further. This is your security associates for 5,000 dollars. That is like three months worth of bills that, for the security of our library. We get reimbursed from the county for that. I just want to know that, that is unusual payment. Normally, we're about 800 hours a week. But they were, they were slow in getting our bills. So, we were paying that, and I've already billed the counties for the work. Any question on, on any of the bills we paid?
Yes. The first page, Atlantic Care. It says employee physicals. Which department is this in? How many employees?
I'm sorry, where we at?
The first page, Atlantic Care.
What point vendor number?
1273, thank you.
A physician group, licensed physician group? The one where it's a little bit bigger, right?
I'm sorry?
To Parker? A physician, a licensed physician group.
Yeah, who, how many, and who?
Oh.
Yeah, you can't say who.
Well, not who, but you mean how many.
There was one. There was one. This was one, and an inspection for, and you do hire, and you do a lot of tests for all that stuff to make sure everything is psychological as well as testing for drugs, or yelp of the one.
On page three, Danzer, Danzinger, and Mark Hall, LLP.
That is a, then a firm that does our actuarial services that are required by the audit in the State of New Jersey. What they do is they do it an actuarial of the people who we have on hired and what the projected cost will be for a city for medical care, whatever, whenever they retire. It's just a projected cost that we have to do for the audit that the state requires. Then someone, an outside firm, say, okay, you have 250 people. If they retire all at one time, what's it going to cost you? And that's an actuarial number that they put down. It's mostly for public safety. But they do have to do a report, again, based on age, anticipation of retirement ages, where they're going to be. So, they put together a number, which is really, nobody really does anything because nobody's going to retire all at one time anyway. But that's, but that's what the actuarial does. And that's what he has to do, and that's what the state says to do. What's your potential other right now for medical costs?
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Thanks, Mr. Lee.
Next time, we will make a phone call.
Counsel, what was discussion? Not it? And executive, may I? Yes, we need a motion. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion, second.
All in favor? So, should we, how should we do this? Because it's a full house. So, should we walk across the street? Or is there a room we can use? There's a lot of people here.
Is this supposed to?
They're going to walk across the street and he's there. Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Pleasantville City Council Meeting. Today is September 16, 2024, and the time is 7:51. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in conformance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the biggest one with liberty and justice for all. I'm sorry, can everyone please stand up?
Can we have a moment of silence for the coach, for the little, for the violin, and for the little boy who passed away that also played Bee Week in Upper Township?
Thank you, thanks. Hold call. Davenport, Samuel Aaron.
Yes.
Camona.
Here.
Coria.
Here.
Buckley.
Yes.
Boguski.
Present.
Thomas.
Present.
Six and a tenth. May I have a motion to dismiss previous minutes?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May you have anything tonight?
I have nothing, thank you.
Next, we have public portion. First, we have Lori Greenberg.
Shockingly, I don't plan on saying anything right now, but I reserve.
All right, thanks, Laura. James Jones? I thought James. Would you like to speak this evening?
Ah, yes, I would. I live in Sassafras, California. We have a new landlord who's outrageously raising the rent ridiculously. In the last three years, minimum $400. We have a lot of people over there who says that they, that their rent is higher than their income. And they've taken, they've, they've taken all the amenities out of the condos. Like if you wash and dry a little bit, they take it out and raise your rent, okay? My triage broke. They went to code enforcement. Now, code enforcement called me and told me, and they said they don't fix triages. But my rent went up $100, okay? And I don't think that this is right, and I'd just like to let you know what kind of things they're doing over there. Three years ago, they told us that the pool would be open. I ain't get it from them yet. I'm still waiting, okay? But the rent's up. They're doing everything that they should not be doing. One of my neighbors washed and dried a win. They refused to fix it. She had to throw it, she had them to throw it out. They do that for you. And then she had to buy her own refrigerator, and the, and the rent's going up. So, I'm letting you know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Lester.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Esther Barasa. I live in Sassafras. I, um, they charged me before $1,050 for rent. And then he sent me a forty here. How much did you pay for that more?
How much?
150. I paid $1,200 now. Then, he sent me, next day, he sent me a letter. The next year, I'm going to pay $300 more. That's, I don't know, because I make my check for month, $1,100. Just to ensure that I'm going to pay it. You know? That's the most.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for that information. Next, we have Mr. Jose.
Thank you, counsel, mayor. Good evening. I'm Jose Alcontrap. I'm here, not in the role of an attorney, but as a citizen who happens to be an attorney in the city of Pleasantville, which I love. I'm in favor of passing this ordinance by 2024, rent control. As an attorney who represents both landlords and tenants, I'm aware of the issue completely of the doughnut for 20, 30, 40 years. Problem is, you read both sides. Landlords want to make money, and tenants don't follow the rules, including five, six, seven people, so they can afford it, and they can also save some money. So, you have to come in and do some collision politics for the government controls a little bit so we can improve. I've looked over the ordinance, and it's tweaking in the favor of it. There's apparently no wording in it. And Mr. Hill, you can address that. If a complaint, nothing, you almost make the city administrator almost like a judge. If you have a control board, the city can make a recommendation, but not a decision. If you have a control board, it's a measure that can make a recommendation, but not a decision that is binding. That will be a judicial matter, so that's not in here anywhere. So imagine all of a sudden the city administrator has twenty, thirty people in one month, in one night, to make decisions about this. It's overwhelming, and it really is a, it's a role that's very difficult to be making. So you have to put wording in there in section two, one five dash four, section C and D, but recourse to Superior Court. You cannot make a rent control board court, technically speaking. So, other than that, other than that, generally speaking. And what do I mean by greed? Well, unfortunately, we have unreasonable people on both sides all the time. And what this does is say, what if we didn't do this? What you're going to do is like this man here, I think he's no longer here, there he is in the blue shirt. He's being faced out. He's actually being told, if you don't have the money, get out. Where do you go? Where do you go? And if he, if he does go, then who comes in? Because there's a type of clientele that they're making more money, and they're not necessarily unfortunate enough to Pleasantville. So who comes in? And then you have the issue, so one block, eight houses, and each house can only have, say, three people, a rental or apartments, and all of a sudden, you have two hundred cars in that one block. That does not happen, because people are trying to accommodate themselves. So both sides have to be, you have to follow this, you have to follow that, and seal. Is that what that is?
Yes.
Thank you, anyway. God bless.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Dow.
Is it Dow, right?
Yes.
Praise him. Excuse my appearance. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam President, and fellow councilmen. I have a matter slightly different, but just to chime off what the gentleman just spoke. I know big corporations saw the snowball effect of rents being increased. Even HUG was unaware of what was going on, because if you had a Section Eight certificate, your Section Eight certificate didn't meet the dollar amount for the raise of the rent. But it was gone, and HUG only gave up, I think, about sixteen hundred dollars. So if he was four hundred dollars short because of the rent, it's two thousand, two thousand dollars. The four hundred dollars that you might be able to pay, HUG says if you can pay four hundred dollars, you don't need the sixteen hundred. So it's a snowball effect that's hurting everyone, mainly, and I'll just say this, that Pleasantville could be the first, the first to say, we're looking out for fair and equal treatment for all individuals. I think that would be a milestone. I'm here for the issue in reference to the code enforcement department. I, I've seen in, in the past that within the police department, you have hired, within the police department, and individuals moved up to higher positions. I've seen the same thing happen to the fire department. When it came to the code enforcement, you have a young lady, Ms. Shannon, who's been there over twenty-seven years. But you brought a new person in, nothing against the person, but you brought a new person into, who wasn't working in the department, and now, if I'm not mistaken, she's the director. Why didn't you hire from within, like you did with the police department and the fire department? If you can go back and revisit it, check it out, change it, if you have to do a, a test on the silver surface. It can be the time that you worked in, it can be a test that you can generate, job performance, or it can be a performance out on the street, whatever. But I think it's not fair, and it's injustice for employees who have worked for the city of Pleasantville. I've been here doing it twenty-five years. I think she's always been there. I think it's unfair for an individual working in the department that all of a sudden, the, the rule that's, I guess, is not a written rule, that was followed with the police and fire department, but now when it comes down to a department that's not the police and fire department, they get overlooked as far as upward mobility from within the department. And like everyone knows, if you got twenty-seven years in the department, they're going to give you the job backwards and forwards. So I would think it would be, be who in the city of Pleasantville to go back and revisit that? Because once you made the person the director that you did make Pleasantville, the person wasn't working in code enforcement. So there's nothing but change. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it was because an individual came in from directing a department, keep them from being fired. We throw them over here and forget about anybody that's been working here for twenty-seven years. I think that's unfair. So again, if I was a union rep, I'd be on it like right on rights, but I'm not a union rep. But without being stated, Councilman, Madam President, Mayor, I guess the new BA, I guess the former DA, I'm not sure. But I'm talking to my latest visitor.
Good evening, everyone. As no, no surprise, I'm here to support the rent control ordinance. We, we've spoken about it before, and it's a must-needed instrument in this town. And we know what's going on nationally with rents. It's harming our community. It's, it's creating a lot of scenarios that were spoken of and the hardships that were spoken of. We understand the landlords have their interests as well, but the tenants have an interest in this. And the, and the city administration has to represent the body of the community. So therefore, we have to support our tenants, and the rights of the landlords are also to be respected. And there's terminal, there's terms in that agreement that do apply to both sides. Everybody must fulfill their, everybody must fulfill their morals in this thing, the landlords and the tenants. We do understand that. Here's a family that was over here, a little girl, and they had to leave, and I just wanted to share with you that they were here. The little kid, little girl there, she just starts pre-K tomorrow, so they had to go. But they were here because it's a great concern of them of this issue, and I told them that I would share this with you. I really don't know, I'm not going to waste a bunch of time, because it's late, and I really have nothing more to say, but please support this ordinance and support your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley King. Shirley King. Oh, she came.
Shirley. Shirley King.
Shirley King. She has a hearing. Ms. King?
Ms. King.
She get, who wants you to come? She should have come. I'll repeat whatever, because she's having a hearing. Okay. Say what you want to say about the rent regulation. What help do you want? What do you request? Hi, everybody.
Hello.
What's your request about the rent regulations?
My request is, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Regulations is approved before this, forward, and that citizens should be free of high rent, and we should have control of what goes on in our community in terms of rent regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're good, you're good, okay. Next, we have Karen. I love, I think he learned. Renee Brown.
This is from, I said hello, everybody. This is a letter that Mr. Nestor, that was right here, he forgot to show you. And this is literally a letter from his landlord telling him he got to get out, and when he's going to have to get out, because he knows he can't afford it. And this is going on all over town. I know, um, I know some young ladies who have kids that have been put out because they raised their rent at the end of the lease. Eight hundred dollars. Eight hundred dollars with a thirty-day notice. And our senior citizens are going back to work in order to pay their taxes. So I'm definitely in support of rent control. But there's something else I wanted to talk about, and I think I should, I think it's Mr. Carmona. Councilman Carmona, that had to direct this to Main Street. I have a question. Main Street, you know, they said that's a county road, right? And the road is a state road. So who's responsible for cleaning the curbs on Main Street? Is it the county or is it the city? It's the county? Okay, so somebody needs to make a call and ask them why our streets are not as clean as Northfield at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, woman.
Did anybody else want to read this, so you can see how they're treating people? And our median income in, in Pleasantville is twenty-one thousand dollars a year for our, our folks. This is why everything is, you have families living, two, three, four families in one place. You come home, you can't park, because everybody got a car, a truck, a landscaper truck, and everything else. You can't go nowhere. The rats are coming. You, y'all have to do, we need relief. And I don't leave them, right? I own, but I'm fighting for this because I suffer for it too. And I love my neighbors, and I try to help them. So I'll, I'll come back for that. I'll come back for that, though. I don't want to hold everybody else late.
May I have a motion to close public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That applies?
Okay, first, the agenda is organized. Ordinance number five, second reading, public hearing required, concerning rent control regulations and amending chapter two fifteen of the city bill. Public hearing required.
Anyone for public hearing?
Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Cristian Moreno Rodriguez. Four one one four, Bender Avenue, Lanes, in New Jersey. They're living in Pleasantville, uh, and members of Pleasantville. First, on a, on a much friendlier note, I did want to give a, a big thank you and shout out to the city of Pleasantville.
Wait a minute, Cristian. This is for ordinance number five.
Yeah.
For the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not the word.
Just for the hearing, just for the ordinance. Do you have any questions or anything about the ordinance?
I can't say, like, just a quick thank you first? Just, I just wanted to say thank you to Pleasantville for, for being so accommodating this past weekend. But with regards to ordinance number five, to me, I like actions. So I appreciate that you come out to our community festivals, and you interact with our community members. It's a great way to connect at a grassroots level with our community members. But it doesn't mean anything if on a policy level, you're not supporting our community members with things as simple as rent control ordinances. And so for me, this is the opportunity to put your words into action. I, I gave a lot of kudos to the Pleasantville Concerned Citizens Group for letting us know that this was on the agenda today. I didn't think it was that controversial. I didn't, I thought it would pass with flying colors from every single council member. But it seems like we're at an impasse here, and I, and I hope it does pass tonight. I really do. Because while we may not be here in City Council every day or every meeting, there's a lot of things happening on Pleasantville that you may not be aware of. There's a lot of, excuse my language, shady landlords out there that are shady in the sense that they're violating the tenant rights just because of their immigration status, or because they don't, they're not fully informed on their rights. And so I don't know what it takes. Next time we get a call, you can come out with us, and you can confront these landlords yourselves, because without this type of protection, there is no recourse for some of our immigrant community members. You may say, go to Legal Services in New Jersey, or South Jersey Legal Services, but they don't handle these type of cases for immigrants. There are no resources out there for our community members. So I'm speaking on behalf of our immigrant community members, because we are in Pleasantville, we are tenants. We do have families that live here and exist in Pleasantville, but we don't have the same protections as the rest of our community members. So we're even more vulnerable when it comes to shady landlords, oral leases, no notices, because they know they can take advantage of our community members because of that language barrier. And so I thank you for your words, and I hope your actions prove that you really are with the community again tonight. And so good to see everyone again tonight, and I just wanted to give my two cents, and also give kudos to the Pleasantville Concerned Citizens for inviting us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Laurie?
Although we should be remark a bit short. Lori Greenberg, I sort of representing many landlords, and I just want to thank everybody for allowing input from both sides. And that's all I really want to say, is thank you for accepting our input, and thank you for us working with the community residents also. Thank you.
Anyone else for a hearing? Like to speak? Seeing no one. May I have a motion to close hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
So may I have a motion for ordinance number five?
Motion, second.
O'Call?
Fablelare? I got to make a statement. I was initially going to vote no, because I didn't see any input from the tenants. I was at a meeting with just the landlords, and I didn't think it was fair that the tenants didn't have an opportunity to speak, or to have their own meeting, or to have representation, legal counsel, because certainly the tenants, the landlords did. If you, if the tenants are fine with this, and they're happy that they're getting some relief, I will most assuredly vote yes. Yes. I just didn't want them to be left out.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldesty?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted.
Thank you!
The ordinance number ten, second reading, public hearing required, adopted the redevelopment plan for the projects identified.
Order, please.
Well, I don't leave the room, so they have to.
Mr. Jones?
Do you have a question?
No.
I thought you were talking to me.
Ordinance number ten, second reading, public hearing required, adopted the redevelopment plan for the projects identified. Block three eighty-two, block twenty fourteen, or the official tax map of the city. Pleasantville pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA forty A, code twelve dash one.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. No problem. Anyone for the public hearing? Seeing no one? May I have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion, second.
All in favor? May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to adopt.
May I have a second?
Second.
O'Call?
Fablelare?
No statement, no.
Carmona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldesty?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Resolution one hundred forty-one, pursuant for the participation in the state of New Jersey federal grant program, grant number twenty-five dash zero one one nine, administered by the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety.
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
May I have a second? Second by Coria? Carmona?
O'Call? Fablelare?
Yes.
Carmona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldesty?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred forty-two, authorizing a change order for a decrease of one hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, for one hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred, eleven dollars and twenty-four cents in the contract to South State Incorporated for the Anse Boulevard improvements.
Wait a minute. Mr. Hill?
So do I need to repeat again? Okay. Resolution one hundred forty-two, authorizing a change order for a decrease of one hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred, eleven dollars and twenty-four cents in the contract to South State Incorporated for the Anse Boulevard improvements.
May I have a motion?
Second.
Second, by Councilman.
I'll hold it.
O'Call?
Fablelare?
Yes.
Colonna?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldesty?
Thomas? Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred forty-three, adopted, authorize signatories or city accounts?
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Second. O'Call?
Fablelare?
Yes.
Carmona?
Yes.
Coria?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldesty?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred forty-four, authorizing the tax collector to refund taxes for certain properties in the city?
May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Second. O'Call?
Fablelare?
Yes.
Carmona?
Yes. Yes.
Korean?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvisby? Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 145, authorizing the issuance of a duplicate tax sales certificate?
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Familiar?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korean?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvisby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 146, authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with Zell Enterprises LLC regarding Route Nine redevelopment plan, block nineteen, blocks thirteen and fifteen.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Familiar?
No.
Camona?
Yes.
Korean?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvisby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 147, approval to submit application and execute an agreement for transportation accessibility and mobility program with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Familiar?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korean?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvisby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 148, according contact person for the employment practices liability or attorney consultation service with the Atlantic County Municipal Jordan Insurance Fund.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Familiar?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korean?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvisby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the billings.
Motion, second.
Roll call. Familiar?
Uh, yes, everything's like six, 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 six.
Camona?
Yes.
Korean?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvisby?
Yes, I've heard, six, 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 six.
Thomas?
Yes, to everything, it's a six, 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 six.
Motion approved. Next, any motion to approve, they go and grab the license.
Motion.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Familiar?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Korean?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Olvisby?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is Thomas Thompson.
May you have anything?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you all for coming out. I wanna, um, ask everyone to hold the Thompson family in their prayers. We lost our librarian last week, and, um, just asking everyone to pray for the family. And I did go to the Mexican Festival, and it was a fun day. The street corn was all that.
Don't worry then.
It was a good time. And, uh, I understand that the chief for fire and, uh, police got an award, a certificate that day. So congratulations to you two.
It was very nice, it was a very nice event.
Thanks. I said, have a good evening.
Councilman?
Nothing at this time.
Any questions?
I wanna say thank you to everybody that came showed up today. I'm particularly glad about this rent control. I'm glad this is over, and I hope everybody's happy. God bless you all. Take care.
And the council. Thank you. I just wanted to say to council, thank you all for, um, voting for the rent control. Hopefully, it'll, you know, bring some relief to those that's renting.
Well, I wasn't here at the last council meeting, of course, so I wanted to say, uh, thank you to the police, fire, my code enforcement, to the city administrator for that incident that occurred on Main Street. I mean, on Washington Avenue Main, and I was planning to be here to say that, but I wasn't able to make it. And I was able to sit back and watch everyone, and how everyone worked together and everything. And the most important thing that I've noticed was that the police firing everybody, and that public works, you can't forget those guys, and those guys and girls. They made sure that the people's okay, they contacted the Red Cross and everything, and then after they made sure the people's okay, then they took in animals, we had animal control. And it's good to see that we didn't have to reach out to another community, we had our own resources. As far as animal control, we put the dogs in, because it was hot that day, and a cool vehicle and everything. So I wanted to say thank you for that. And also, uh, Councilman Carmola, you know, me even talking on the phone a lot, so I'm glad you had this rent control issue, because it's really been, you're a baby. So I'm really glad that you stuck to the guns, and we were able to get it done, and thank you.
Thank you.